It's regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes Planning Commissions. The Commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by City Council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the City Planning Department, the city's Attorney's Office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wharton Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the Commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please be either be silenced or turned off. And the roll call, please.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Kempin.
Here.
Mr. Current.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepki. Mr. Schultz. Mr. Stratt. Mr. Tagle.
Here.
All right, we will have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Mr. Edmonds.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Current, thank you.
Mr. Hudson.
Is this a vote?
Vote on approving the agenda.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Current.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
All right, item number three, approval of the minutes of the July 24, 2012 special study meeting. Move to approve. Mr. Current.
And I'll second.
Mr. Kempin.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Current.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
All right, item number four, public comments for items not on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda? All right, item number five, preliminary site plan review, file number SP 975, proposed Sears Holdings Technical Center, north of Big Beaver, west of Coolidge, which is 2240 Cunningham, section 19, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District Consent Judgment. Mr. Savinat or Mr.?
Mr. Carlisle will present this.
Thank you. As the chairman mentioned, the first item before you tonight is a proposed eight-foot-high fence which would surround the entirety of the property for the Sears Holding Technical Center. According to the applicant, the reason for the fence is for security purposes. The fence design and type are permitted by ordinance. The site, the staff memo included the fact that the, that the top of this fence was going to be slightly interned. That has been revised and the fence is just going to be straight up, but the entirety of the fence will be eight feet high for clarification. Of note, the reason this is becoming for the Planning Commission is because this is a consent judgment agreement, and part of the agreement was that any changes to site plan had to be, had to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Irregardless of that fact, this would not normally have to come in front of the Planning Commission for, for site plan review. An additional note is that the applicant is requesting relief from the height requirement of fences in the front yard. Only 30 inches are allowed for fences in the front yard. However, the applicant is asking for relief to eight feet high. Again, this is for security purposes, and this is a relief that can be granted based on recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council. In regards to access, access to the site will remain off the two existing curb cuts off Cunningham Drive. However, the applicant is proposing to add gates to those entrances. The gates, the entrances will be open between the hours of 8 to 5, and provided that the fire department has access after hours, we don't find that access and circulation will be an issue in regards to the fence. The only identified issue that we have found in regards to the application is in regards to the issue of transition between the northern property line, as well as the transition between the existing parking lots in association. In regards to the northern property line, in order to install this fence, the applicant has to remove some of the trees that do provide some buffering from the northern property line to those adjacent northerly single-family neighbors. We have met with the applicant and they have agreed to any trees that are removed as part of the fence installation will be replaced in kind, so that should be a note that the Planning Commission takes into account. Secondly, in regards to the transition between their parking lot and the Sears, and the old Kmart headquarters parking lot, there is an existing two-to-three-foot-wide curb that separates those two currently. However, we do have concerns that unless there are some sort of parking bumpers or something of that like, that, that fence, that fence will be damaged over time with cars hitting it, snowplows, et cetera. So accordingly, the applicant has agreed to put in parking bumpers on their side of the fence running along that entire length of that fence line. So in summary, we do recommend approval of the proposed fence based upon the recommendation from the Planning Commission to relieve, to relieve height in the front yard from 30 inches to eight feet. Also contingent upon the fire department having access after hours for that gate to their sufficiency, as well as the applicant agrees to replace trees in kind after removal. And secondly, that curb bumpouts will be provided along the fence, along the western, I'm sorry, the eastern property line. That concludes, concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is John Primo. I'm from the law firm at Kick'em Hanley. Our address is 32121 West Woodward Avenue, Royal Oak. And I'd just like to add a few points to what Ben has already provided. I think it's been fairly thorough, in fact. In fact, I got a few. If you don't mind, I'd like to maybe show you a larger color scheme where you can see the fences actually located on the property. Get you a good overview here. I don't know if this works for you guys, this help you. I think one of the areas of interest are probably going to be the entrances, obviously, ingress egress. Those areas, as Ben, again, has told us, that during the business hours they'll be open, however, during off-hours they'll be closed, and the access will be granted through a key card or some other form of security, whether there's a guard within the building that accesses the gate upon identity confirmation, then, of course, the person will be able to come on the property. One of the concerns early on was, was there going to be some sort of traffic issue on Cunningham, were we going to have to deal with the gate issue? And that's, Sears has taken it upon themselves to say, no, we don't want to have any issues with the gates, and we'll leave them open so that we have ingress egress with no problems. As far as the bumper issue that Ben has again raised, kind of given it some additional thought. If you look at the drawing, there's currently a curb line that runs north and south on the property, and what we'll do, one of the ideas is to create a, I guess, for lack of a better term, re-curb that particular area, where there'll be a curb on the inside portion, the interior of our lot, and what we'll do is, you know, make it a permanent structure rather than a bumper that would constantly move and need replacing and realignment and all that sort of stuff. Brent has been to the site, along with Ben, they've measured the depths of those particular parking areas, and there's enough room to maybe we could do something like that. And that would give us the, you know, the depth and maintain our parking, and we'll be all set. So also with me this evening, first of all, if there's any questions for me regarding this.
Do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I have a question. Your, the property border for this property, is it near to the fence?
I'm sorry, what?
The property border.
The property border, the, the north-south line you're talking about?
I was thinking, you know, through the parking lot itself, you know, it looks like you're going to be moving those parking spots over there alongside that fence.
Okay.
Okay. How, how far from there is, is the property edge, property line? From where the proposed fence line is going to be?
May I, Mr. Chairman? I believe what Mr. Kempin's asking is, is where, where in relationship to the existing island that's formed by the curbs, the curbs and the landscaping, where is the property line? And I would guess that, I believe the property line is, is the, basically, the, the edge of the, the eastern edge of the curb would be the property line, if I believe that's correct.
The eastern edge of the curb, right. The eastern edge of the curb would be. So you were, in some sense, creating an island on our side where the fence will run down the center of that.
Okay.
Does that help? I hope.
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
So the intent of the security is for parking?
No, no. The intent of the security is, and with me this evening is Mike Dombrowski, and Mr. Dombrowski will share with you the necessity of the fence from an operational perspective.
Oh.
He is with the Sears Holding Corporation. Okay. So I'll leave that to Mr. Dombrowski.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Please, if you would.
All right. My name's Mike Dombrowski. I'm Vice President with Sears Holdings. I'm responsible for the data centers. We currently have two data centers. The primary data center located here in Troy, Michigan, on 2240 Cunningham Drive. Our backup data center is in Hoffman Estates, Illinois, which is our headquarters. Obviously, you know, being from Kmart, we're longstanding citizens of the city of Troy. And basically, it's unfortunate that we have to go to this extreme, but I think just because of the way things are nowadays, data centers are a high-risk building. I think we all know that. One of the extra measures of security that the CIO and our executive management would like to see is a better protection of our data, better protection of the facility, better protection of its associates. So one way that we can do that, and we have made several other improvements to security. We've added biometrics on the inside of the building. We've upgraded the security system. We've add, added out exterior lighting, exterior motion detectors, glass protectors, and detectors. The last thing remaining was the fence, and they thought that we'd go forward with this, and I absolutely agree, because I am responsible for the care and well-being of these, of these associates, as well as the protection of the data. So again, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we have to go to this extreme. As John said, we're going to do everything in our power to work with the city to make this aesthetically correct and appealing, and I hope you all agree. So really, that's it.
Any questions?
Mr. Edmonds. Just add one question. I'm assuming then that everything is okay with the fire department and police in terms of getting access to the site?
They just want to make sure that, and this will be required, that there's a, there's a solution for providing access for the fire department after hours when the gates close. Very typical for gates, the, there's either, there's a Knox box, or there's a code, or a card, or whatever. Fire, it's, it's very typical that this, that...
Absolutely. I mean, we could arrange that provision. I have no problem with that. We, we work with the fire and police department on a regular basis. They do regular inspections, so absolutely, if a card is required, we'll provide a card.
Thank you.
Please sign in before you sit down.
I will.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, we'll bring it back for discussion or a motion. Mr. Edmonds.
I'll make the resolution. The post-resolved, the Planning Commission hereby recommends to City Council that preliminary site plan approval for the revised site plan for the Sears Holdings Technical Center, including a proposed eight-foot-high security fence, a portion of which is located in the front yard, located north of Big Beaver, west of Coolidge, 2240 Cunningham, in section 19, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District, but controlled by consent judgment, be granted subject to the following. Number one, satisfy the fire department's access requirements, including providing gate code or opener. Number two, replace any trees removed as a result of fence installation. And three, indicate what protection within their parking lot is being provided for the fence.
Do you have a second?
I'd like to second, but I'd like to change one word in that number three. I think the, in number three, the word "for" after the word "provided" should be changed to "by." I don't think you're, as it reads now, at least I interpret it, says, indicate what protection within the parking lot is, is being provided for the fence. So what kind of protection we're providing for the fence? I don't think so. I think it should be "by." But anyway, that's the only change. And I'll second that. You want to make that change, Mr. Edmonds?
Mr. Edmonds, would you consider that change?
Okay, I'll second that.
All right.
Mr. Current.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
This will be going before the City Council, upcoming City Council meeting for approval.
All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next item on the agenda is a preliminary site plan review, file number SP 976, proposed Regent's Park of Troy Phase Two, or west of Crooks, north side of Butterfield, section 29, currently zoned MF multifamily district. Who's doing the report? Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. Again, as the chairman mentioned, this is a site plan review for the proposed Regent's Park. This is the Phase Two of the Regent's Park development off of Butterfield Road. The intent is to match Phase One, Phase Two should match Phase One as much as possible. Phase Two includes two buildings with 58 apartments, 116 off-street parking spaces, 70 of which are located in an underground garage. Access to Phase Two will be shared with the common access to Phase One, so there will not be any additional curb cuts off of Butterfield Road. The current site is improved with a single-family residential home and is surrounded by office and multifamily uses, and the proposed development meets all the bulk and density requirements. In addition, it does meet all the supplemental regulations for multifamily uses. With that being said, we do have a few minor issues that we believe can be handled administratively as part of the final site plan submittal, so I just want to kind of quickly highlight those for the Planning Commission's purview. The first is in regard to parking. While parking is sufficient, the applicant has not provided bicycle parking as required by ordinance. We had a conversation with the applicant today, and they are willing to provide a bicycle parking, bicycle, bicycle parking location near their front entrance off of Butterfield Road. Secondly, while the applicant has provided a complete landscape plan, which for the most part is compliant with the ordinance, there are a few deficiencies I'd like to note. The first is they are required to add one more greenbelt tree along Butterfield Road. In addition, they need to show landscape calculations on the plan itself. Secondly, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high fence in, along the entirety of the property or along Butterfield Road. Again, this is in the front yard setback, and as we noted with the Sears Holding, 30 inches is allowed by code. The applicant is asking for six inches, or six feet, I apologize, and this has to be approved by the Building Board of Appeals, because it's not a consent judgment, it has to go to the Building Board of Appeals for approval. So that'll be a noted item on the, on the application. And lastly, in regards to landscape plan, the applicant has shown a trash pad on their location where the trash dumpster, which is located in underground garage, will be rolled out, and the trash will be picked up once or twice a week, so the trash will be sitting out for a few hours on this trash pad. We just asked the applicant screen the trash enclosure as required by ordinance. And lastly, the minor issue is in regards to photometrics. The photometrics were slightly greater along the Butterfield Road property line, so we asked the applicant just to resubmit photometrics that comply with the ordinance as part of the final site plan approval. So in summary, we do recommend approval and find that these outstanding items can be addressed and handled administratively, and these include providing the minimum floor area calculations, providing one additional street tree on Butterfield Road, obtaining the necessary variance from the Building Board of Appeals for the fence height, providing trash enclosure details, providing fixture and photometrics that comply with section 13.05 of the ordinance, and lastly, providing two bicycle parking spaces on their site. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? I see the applicant is present.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi there. My name is Jennifer Roth, Village Green Companies. We are the developer and manager of Regent's Park of Troy. I'll go through a couple of, of issues, but just, you know, as, on behalf of Village Green, and just in discussions with our first project, Regent's Park of Troy, I think since, since its inception, this project is one of the highest-quality community residences in the, in the city of Troy. As of 2001, we completed 11 buildings, 11 residential buildings, 299 units each, with about 11,000-square-foot clubhouse with the amenities for each resident. So to go into the project, the, you know, for the past, because in 2001, things were looking well, we introduced 299 units into the project, things were fine, things didn't go so well during a very short period of time that, you know, we were trying to get this project going. So I think Brent's probably familiar with that, but in the last five years, we've seen great success. We've seen high occupancy, we've seen over 10 countries represented at our community based on wanting to be and live in the city of Troy. I think it's important to talk about our relationship with the city as it related to the timeframe it took. It was a two-year process, it was probably even longer than that on the, on the planning, building code side, just in terms of, of the size of the project. So I think we have spent a lot of time working with relationship for the city of Troy, and we have been very, I think, forthright in terms of what we're doing on this, on the second phase, as obviously it's a continuation of our project. So we've met with the building department already, met with, you know, we've met with Brent a handful of times, we've met with engineering, so we're, you know, we're making sure we're following everything we need to do. I think the quality of our buildings for Phase One is important to discuss in terms of how we look at and represent the final two buildings. With that being said, this is one project for us. This, you know, for us to talk about Phase One and Phase Two, you know, obviously we have to from a timing standpoint, but this is one project. These two buildings can't stand alone. They will be using the clubhouse amenities, they will be using the pool, and all the clubhouse amenities now has 13, you know, the, the project Regent's Park of Troy will encompass 13 buildings. So it's very important for us, as, as much as it is that, that it's a mirror image of the buildings, the buildings are the same, the architecture is the same, the units are the same, the landscaping is the same, for us to represent everything as one cohesive design. The two buildings will be of equal quality to Phase One. Nothing will change on those, on that quality. But out of the open items I want to discuss, I want to go through a few things. As a bike parking, I, I apologize for the misclarification today. Our landscape architect called Brent to talk about the submittal process for the next phase, so I don't know that it was why this came up. Our discussion early on, we have no problem putting two bicycle spaces in the garage. I can put, you know, I can put spaces in the garage, one for, for each, either garage. We don't have any bike racks outside on any of the properties, so I have no problem putting it inside. I didn't realize, and I was, didn't understand until about an hour ago, that, that you wanted the bill, the parking racks on the outside. I have no problem providing a bike rack in each building in the garage, but not outside of the garage. The landscape plan, we have no issues. We will add that missing tree. We will make sure the calculations are on there correctly. For purposes of this meeting, on our civil sheet, we have all of our site, site data, and our landscaping calculations are about 1.4 acres of landscaping. It's about 40% of the site is landscaped. Also, in clarification of the fence, it's a four-foot-high fence, and of course, as part of our project, and again, the fence is running the length of Phase One on both sides of the street. We want to continue the fence. So that's, that's the issue with the fence. On the photometrics, I believe we were matching Phase One. I have no problem with looking at reducing that light pole to see if we can get that calculation down. I also believe we're showing a light pole, we're showing two light poles, that we would probably remove one light pole and just show the light pole next to the seating area that's along Butterfield Road, which is here. So there's a light pole there. We had a continuation of benches along Butterfield that we used with a light, light pole. It's a decorative light pole. So we'd like to keep that. I'll check to make sure that we'll all be pretty. We're also showing a light pole in the center, and that I will probably have removed, so it doesn't cause any conflicts along Butterfield Road. So last, we come to trash enclosures. So my discussion, we're talking about our first 11 buildings, plays into our issue with how we utilize and what we do with our site right now. This is the site plan of Phase One. Do you want me to turn that? So Phase One, of the 11 buildings, the red areas are concrete pads. There's eight areas, so 11 buildings, eight pad areas. Once a week, we take dumpsters out of our garage, they're stored in a trash room, there's a trash chute that comes down, we rotate the trash dumpsters as they get filled within the building. Once a week, we take the trash dumpsters out, we roll them out to the designated pad. Our service provider comes in, empties the trash. We then put the dumpsters back where they're located into the garage. This is seamless for the resident. It's invisible to the resident. They don't have to worry about trash, they don't have to worry about dumpsters, they don't have to worry about dumpster enclosure. We want to continue this on our project. We would not like to have one dumpster enclosure when the entire site is not, does not have that facility. We think it's a negative impact on the resident, and I also don't know how we'd handle the service provider to have two different types of systems now when he comes in onto one project. So our only issue there is that we'd like to make sure we're following what our project and our standards are doing right now. What is Phase, you know, what is Phase One doing? I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Current.
Yeah, on the, regarding the chain link fence, can you show me where that chain link fence is on your drawing, please?
Sure. And, and I will tell you, it's not a chain link fence.
I didn't think it was. That's what I'm asking. It's, it's...
It's a decorative fence that essentially borders. Here's Phase One. It essentially runs the, down the line on both sides, and Phase One's on both sides of Butterfield. We got our entrance, we got our gate, and the entire, the entire property's gated. So we got security gates here, and we have a decorative fence that runs the length of, all the way down to Phase One, racks that goes around the security and the selected gate, and then we want to continue it further down. So it runs the entire length of Butterfield, both sides of the road. It's four-foot-high, it's a decorative, very ornamental gate, or fencing system with the same ornamental gates, and the gates on the inside, and the fence on the inside is six-foot-high, but it's four-foot-high.
Thank you. I didn't think it was chain linked. I looked at the site, it looked beautiful. I just couldn't imagine chain link there.
Yeah, it is beautiful. You're right.
Mr. Savinat, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is this requirement, 30-inch-high fence, is this new in the new ordinance, or would this have been the same requirement when Phase One was constructed?
It's actually not in the zoning ordinance. It's a, it's a different ordinance, so I believe it would have been in place in 2001, but I'm, I can't say for certain.
Were you involved in Phase One?
I was, but I don't recall that piece, because it was probably done at permitting, and I came in to... and I came into Village Green during construction.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Sanzico?
Just curious, my, my concern is stormwater management, and I just was wondering if you, if you're aware of how you're handling, handling the stormwater. I, I see a pond to the southwest, but I don't know, but I, without studying it further, I'm not sure if the, if the water's going to that pond or not. Could, could you elaborate a little bit on how you're handling the stormwater?
We are, yes, absolutely. We are looking at a couple of different things. The size of, the size of our pond, so the pond that you're referring to is our detention pond for Phase One. What we're looking to do, and we're actually meeting to finish this discussion with engineering tomorrow, is how we get our storm over to that detention pond and tie into that pond. So, we're looking at using that existing pond to tie in for our detention for this three acres.
You don't, is it a wet pond?
It's a wet pond. It's required to be wet. So, we have to keep a permanent water level. And then we put water features in just to make sure our residents have something to look at.
Mr. Edmonds?
I was just going to ask Mr. Savinat a question. Are our bicycle racks required to be outside with the ordinance? That's what my understanding was.
It's, it actually doesn't specifically require it outside. It requires it within 50 feet of a building, the building entrance.
And does this comply with that, then?
I would ask the petitioner.
If it's...
Are you, is the bicycle rack going to be within 50%, 50 feet of the building entrance?
Yes. Yes, and they can easily access it by elevator or by stairs and be able to get down directly into a secured, the secured parking garage.
Thank you. Mr. Savinat?
Not, not a question, just, I, I think, I think, I think Jennifer would like some closure on the dumpster issue. And she's already spoken at length about it, but I'll, I'd like to just kind of add my two cents. So, this is going to be building, if approved, buildings 12 and 13. There's already 11 buildings there. They've already got a, the way they deal with dumpsters, they're not screened like, like we require dumpsters to be screened. They're, they are, they are dumpsters, clearly. They, they're collected and they're dumped, but they're not, they're mostly inside the building. So, it's, it's much like, like myself. I keep my garbage inside my garage, and on Wednesday night, if I get home from planning commission, nine o'clock, it goes out on the curb, and I get up in the morning and, because I, if I don't put it out at night, I forget, and I get in trouble. So, I put it out, and then I come home at 5:00, and I, my kids, for sure, wait for me to put it away. They don't do it. So, I get home at 5:00. So, they're, they're outside from, we'll say from 9:00 at night till 5:00 the next afternoon. That's like 19 hours that my, now, it's only a trash can. It's not a dumpster. It's a little bit different. But I think what they're asking for is, is kind of treated somewhat similar to a residential trash pickup. It is a dumpster, and it is going to be unsightly when it's out, when it's outside. And there is a requirement that, that if the dumpster is outside, that it's screened on three sides plus gated, and that the gates kept closed. However, it's, it's a little bit different animal. So, that's, I think, what, what she's seeking clarification on. We're, we're seeking clarification on this evening is, how do we deal with this animal? It's a little bit different, but it's, it's something that's ongoing for the 11 other buildings. And we can't, we can't change it because they're not proposing to. So...
Anytime.
Can you tell us how long those dumpsters, approximately, how long those dumpsters sit outside before they get picked up and rolled back in?
Sure. It's essentially, it's essentially Thursday, it's essentially a day. It's essentially eight hours. Now, if we want to look at making sure that's, that's restricted, and we can add a timeframe to it, we, that would be acceptable to us to say it can only be out from, you know, one day from 9:00 to 3:00, you know, some sort of time limit. We don't like to keep those out because we need them to be back in the buildings. So, but we're, we are okay with, with having it set to some time constraints if that, if that would help.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We occasionally, this is Hilton Head, in a condo, it's a condo development, and they have, what I think you're describing is the same trash disposal system. They've got five stories. There's a little room in each one. You dump it, it goes down to a trash receptacle.
Correct.
This one, though, is always, there's a parking structure below these condos where the, the waste goes.
Mm-hmm.
And Tringali or whatever waste management, who's ever doing it, comes in with their truck and then dumps it within the structure. Is your setup so that that's probably not a feasible way of doing it?
No, because I don't know that we could get, we could technically get that kind of truck with that size within the facility.
Since you're willing to limit it to a few hours, depending what the hours are outside?
Yes.
Any suggestions as to the hours?
I would, I would, I'm not sure exactly what time the service comes in the morning. So, you know, if it was an 8:00 to 4:00, or if it's 9:00 to 5:00, I don't know that, I don't, I want to make sure I know when the service is coming, so I don't...
Okay. Could I suggest if we, we approve this tonight, that we can kind of make that administrative decision with the planning department as to the hours?
Yes, but I see, how is this going to be policed? I mean, there's going to be 11 other dumpsters out there that can be out there for whatever time period. I mean, we, we're not controlling them. I, I hear where you're going with this, Mike, and I don't think it's a bad idea. But again, I'm just concerned that, I think at some point, we have to take the petitioners at their word that they don't want them out there any longer than they have to have them either.
And your question of enforcement arises about every other meeting before us as to how these code violations are, are dealt with. But I guess I'm inclined to give them the benefit of the doubt, unless this is a nice, nice classy development.
Thank you.
I can't imagine
Thank you.
that they want to leave the trash containers out there for 24 hours or so.
And I, and I honestly, I don't know if, if we looked at the zoning ordinance, the intent really wasn't to cover a case like this. The intent was to cover dumpsters that are out 24/7, or to enclose dumpsters. So, this has got enough of a uniqueness to it that I guess I'm not real concerned if it's a day, and if we can limit it to some reasonable span of time, and really you'll be on, on the honor system. And, you know, and I
Absolutely.
appreciate the, the desire to keep your properties looking nice and not have dumpsters sitting out in the parking lots.
Right. And we don't want that as well. You're right.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could add, this is something that Ben and I talked about, you know, when is a dumpster pad a dumpster pad? Because that's, it gets to, the intent, the intent is if you have a dumpster sitting there, it needs to be screened.
Right.
This is going to be inside, so it's a little bit, a little bit different animal.
Right. One, I'm sorry, Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, I have a few thoughts on, on the dumpster thing, too. Even when we do set up with shielding or whatever on trash day, generally, I've seen all around the city and, and other communities where the gates are actually left open on trash day, and, you know, those gates and the walls, and they often fall into disrepair because they're surrounded by parking areas. And I think this is actually maybe a preferable approach to having it, like hauling the trash out on trash day and keeping the place nice and clean and natural looking
Right.
at all other times. So, I don't know if there's any other approvals that would need to take place. Is this a zoning board of appeals sort of a decision when it would move forward?
No, the, the only, the only, the next approval needed to approve this as, as proposed would be the building code board of appeals for the fence. Other than that, there's a, there's some, some tidying up that can be done administratively as part, prior to final site plan approval. We're very comfortable with the project as designed moving forward.
Mr. Savinat, I, I remember some discussions some time ago about which approval comes in which order, and is it that we tonight will act on this, and then they go to the board of zoning appeal?
It's, it's actually the building code board of appeals. It's because it's, it's a fence variance, it's not the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
It's a different, it's a different entity.
And is that prior to issuing a building permit?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'd just like to note, if they, if they do not receive the approval to have the four-foot fence, they can still do a, a fence that's 30 inches high in that location. So, this is just to get them that extra foot and six inches.
I guess a question, and I don't know, maybe Mr. Carlisle, item number five, where you talked about the fixture, light fixtures and pole details. Was it anything specific about the height of the pole, or was it just the, the photometrics and the foot candle levels?
In regard, there was, we did not see, I, I don't believe that the details about what the fixture actually looked like and the height of the pole was submitted as part of the application, so we need that. In addition, there is a requirement about the photometrics levels at the property line, and that just needs to be reduced to meet the code requirement. So, just a redoing of the photometric to meet their code requirements, as well as submit all the fixture details and the pole height, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
I did have, I did have one more comment
Yes, Mr. Kempin.
in relation to the bike racks, and I know we're trying to make this a more commutable area for pedestrians and bicycles likewise. And I was wondering if visitors coming into the area would have access to a bike rack that was in the garage.
We have two bike racks at the clubhouse.
Oh, at the clubhouse?
Never been used. But we do have two, two bike racks at the, at the clubhouse when anyone comes in. But it's secured property, so if there are guests that are coming in, they can get into the garage, they can get into the clubhouse. So...
That answers my question.
But we do have, but we do have two. We have two there at the clubhouse.
Good point. Thanks.
Anything else? Mr. Sanzico?
I'd like to make a resolution.
All right.
No one else has any other comments? We resolve that the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article B of the zoning ordinance as requested for proposed Regent's Park of Troy, Phase Two, located west of Crooks on the north side of Butterfield, Section 29, within the NF multifamily residential district, be granted subject to the following. Provide minimum floor area per unit information. Add one additional tree along Butterfield Road. Obtain variance from the building code board of appeals to allow for a six-foot-high fence when only 30 inches is allowed in the front yard. Provide trash enclosure details and submit fixture and pole details and revised photometrics that comply with Section 13.05 as part of the final site plan review.
I have a question on your resolution.
Did you go to delete four? Was that?
Well, that's your purview.
I, after I read it, I, I thought that we should delete item. I like to delete item number four regarding the trash.
I think you were saying you're looking for a four-foot fence, not a six-foot fence.
Correct. Thank you.
Phil? And item number three?
Correct.
A four-foot fence. I'd like to amend that also.
All right.
I'll second that.
What other slide? I think it's Article Eight instead of Article B. Whatever.
Looks like a D.
Article B, yes.
Oh, is it B?
No, it's, it looks like an eight.
It's an eight in my eyes.
Phil, do you want to?
Article E. Use your glasses, Nick. Thank you.
All right. So, we're going to correct it to Article Eight. The, the item number three will have a four-foot-high fence, and we will delete item number four. Is that correct?
Yes, right.
May I, may I consider something else? We were discussing a bike rack.
Yes.
Either its interior or the exterior. Should that perhaps be part of the resolution?
Yeah, I'm surprised it's not there.
I would propose that we allow them to include it within the building structure as proposed.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a second?
I'll do it.
All right. On the roll call.
Can I, can I just confirm? Kathy, did you get all that? Okay. Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for presentation.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is planned unit development. File number PUD 004, Big Beaver Center, formerly the Monarch PUD. North side of Big Beaver Road between Alpine and McClure, Section 20, currently zone PUD 4, and R-1B, one-family residential districts. Who is Mr. Carlisle?
Thank you. This is an item that the planning commission should be well familiar with. This item was last reviewed on the July 24th meeting. I have provided, we did provide a memo with accompanying information. I'm not going to go over in detail about what the memo provided, but I want to highlight three issues that came out as a result of that public hearing on July 24th. The three issues that were identified were traffic and development access, multitude of commercial site planning issues, as well as a multitude of residential site plan issues. So, I'll go over each three briefly and then answer any questions accordingly. And specifically in regards to traffic, there was three specific concerns. One was the potential impact upon Alpine Road and the single-family residential neighborhood to the north. The second was in regard to automobile stacking and access onto and from Big Beaver Road in relation to the bank drive-through egress point. And the third was in regards to the total number of curb cuts. Understanding the traffic concerns that were raised at the last meeting, we did have the city's traffic engineer, Steve Deering from OHM, did review the proposed site plan and did provide a memo that was included in your packet. I'm not going to go over Mr. Deering's memo because it can speak much greater depth into traffic than I can. However, just for the public's education, I just want to go over a few of the findings that he, that he did conclude. First conclusion was that Mr. Deering finds that Alpine and McClure Road are local streets whose primary function is to provide access to adjoining properties. The proposed developments in terms of access and curb cut uses are using the local streets as they're intended to be used. And so that the number of curb cuts proposed will not change the anticipated modest, modest increase in traffic volume. So, Mr. Deering does not have any issues in regards to the number of curb cuts specifically along Alpine. Second issue is, that was raised, was there was a, there was a recommendation to cul-de-sac the new residential road that was being proposed. Mr. Deering finds that, he does not advise the cul-de-sac of this residential road. He finds that cul-de-sacs do limit safety access. They are harder to police and provide snow clearance, and they're hard to maintain. And lastly, they do promote isolation as well as inhibit, inhibit neighborhood connectivity. There was some discussion regarding the flipping of the bank from the east side, sorry, from the west side to the east side of the development. Mr. Deering does find that there are advantages and disadvantages to having it on one side or the other. However, in conclusion, he sees no fundamental advantage versus one over the other. In response to that, though, Mr. Deering did suggest a proposed site plan change to the bank ingress, and that includes moving the ingress point farther north about 20 feet, as well as narrowing that ingress point. The applicant has done that accordingly. And so, in conclusion, Mr. Deering feels that this will address many of the issues raised in regards to egress from the bank The second item for discussion was in regard to commercial site plan changes. We, in our last previous memo, we listed about 15 items in regards to issues that we had with the commercial site plan, and these included the inclusion of bicycle parking, a shifting and narrowing of the bank egress, the provision of material samples, the provision of pedestrian-style lighting along Big Beaver, as well as revised photometrics. The applicant has addressed all of those outstanding items in regards to the commercial site plan, and they have included material samples, as well as a revised photometric for the planning commission to review. The only outstanding item in regards to the commercial site plan that I want to raise is that the applicant has not met the requirement of the 20% site landscaping requirement. The applicant has increased the amount of site landscaping from 12% to, I believe it's about 14%. And this includes additional landscaping on the rear of the property in relation to the, in between the proposed rear of the building, as well as the parking lot. And this mirrors the proposed landscaping along Big Beaver Road. However, they are still deficient in the, in the total area of landscaping required. It should be noted that just due to building form requirements, as well as the need for an urban-style development or the desire for urban-style development in this area, that that 20% site landscaping might be hard to obtain in practicality. So, this issue should be contemplated, and it can be a relief granted by the planning commission through the PUD process. In regards to the residential site plan, we did list nine issues in our previous report in regards to that, and these include increasing the rear yard setback along the northern property line from 30 feet to 45 feet, a submit all floor plans and elevations, as well as providing landscape and sidewalks along the entire length of Alpine and McClure where their development lies. All outstanding issues in regards to the residential site plan have been addressed by the applicant, including increasing the setback to 45 feet along the near, the northern property line. So, it is our finding that the applicant has addressed all of the standards in relation to the PUD as outlined in Section 11.03. We find that this development is a unique opportunity to provide stimulus in future development along Big Beaver Road. It does meet most or all of the requirements of the Big Beaver Corridor Plan and the Master Plan. It is compatible, as well as will serve the adjacent residential neighborhood, and the proposed residential does provide a buffer between the residential to the north and the commercial on Big Beaver. The applicant has provided significant public amenities along Big Beaver that do advance the master plan, as well as provide an example that can be emulated across Big Beaver Corridor and future development. Lastly, the compact integrated design and compromise of uses would be a benefit to the Big Beaver Corridor. So, in conclusion, we do support the project, and we do recommend approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions? Mr. Strudson?
A question for staff, if I may. This is our first PUD under the revised ordinance, and I, my memory is dim as to... This is our first PUD under the revised ordinance, and I, my memory is dim as to our approval of the prior PUDs. But my question is, with this plan in front of us, what is it zoned? Now, I know that PUD is a separate zoning animal, but we've got in here residential area, which seems pretty clear-cut to me, but let's talk about the, I don't mean to be derogatory, but for lack of a better word, the strip mall along the front. We've got some restaurants proposed in there, or at least a restaurant proposed, and some other retail developments. What happens if the restaurant's not feasible, and somebody else wants to come in there with a different type of business? What is it zoned? Is it just a free-for-all at that point, because there is no zoning?
The zoning would be, it's, it's PUD now, with the exception of the northerly two properties which are presently residential, but they'll have to be rezoned also to PUD. But presently, the actual zoning is PUD four, that's the actual zoning.
I understand that.
So, in terms of what uses are permitted there, the, the applicant would lay out in the PUD agreement what those uses are, but it's essentially, he wants, he wants to basically emulate the uses permitted today on, within the Big Beaver zoning district. That's essentially what he wants to do.
Well, I hate to ask the question, but what are those uses within the district? Are there any limitations?
I, I think you'd probably want to ask the applicant what he, what he intends to do there.
We're talking theoretically. Let's assume, he says, I want to put a restaurant in, I want to put an optometrist in there, and a drugstore. None of those uses come forth, and we've got a guy who wants to manufacture widgets in one of those. What is NAPA going to look at in determining what uses in that PUD which, PUD which had been approved are allowable if these present interests aren't there? What's the standard?
Pardon me? Well, yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. Our new ordinance isn't really that much more significantly different than our old ordinance. And what, what happens first is you approve a concept, and they're bound by that concept. So if they put this on paper, this will go to City Council for a plan-unit development agreement with their concept plan. And you were around when we did some of the others, where there were concepts, proposed phases, some of them were pretty complicated. We held them to that plan, and they were, as part of the agreement, had to put in their diagrams and everything that you've seen. If they want to change that, they have to come back to you, and you would have to approve something that was significantly different, and I don't mean significantly, I mean if they don't stick to, you're going to see this again anyway. After the plan-unit development agreement is, is completed, they're going to come in with more, with preliminary site plans, just like anybody else. So you will get a shot to look at them. Brent's raising his finger, so.
This is actually, they're actually coming in for concurrent concept, concept development plan and preliminary plan approval. They're doing it concurrently. So you're actually, sorry to-
That's okay.
-correct you, Sue, but you're actually not going to see it again. But, go ahead, you can finish, and I'll, I'll piggyback on top of it.
They haven't really gotten around to drafting the plan-unit development agreement, they're in the process of doing that, but if you looked at our other agreements, they're pretty specific. They attach their landscaping plan, they attach their lighting plan, they attach everything that you would normally see and what you have seen. If they vary from that, they, they really can't unless it is clearly specified. So you might have something in there that says, these are the type of amenities, lighting we're going to put in. Usually, the language would say, or something similar approved by the administration. So it's got to be pictures of what it looks like, with the idea that if it's significantly different, it's got to come back to you. If it's, if the pictures are pretty much, let's say they couldn't order that particular lamppost, but there's something more attractive or something similar, we would approve that administratively.
I understand that. My point is, let's assume they've done all that, we've approved it, it looks great, it just doesn't, in a two-year period, one of those buildings is now vacant. They want to come in with not a restaurant, but something else. Does that plan have to be amended, then?
Yes.
What?
Depends.
Now, what we've talked about kind of informally, and I don't want to, I certainly in no way want to speak for the applicant, but what's been kind of an underlying assumption is what they want to, they want to, the uses that they want to have in the retail component are the same uses that are permitted within the Big Beaver Corridor District. Basically the same thing. So the offices, your restaurants, retail, those types, those types of uses, that's been kind of the, the intent of the conversation all along. That'll be formalized in the PUD agreement, but I, again, if you certainly want to jump in and add to that, I mean, that's kind of what, where we've been, where we've gone with that. You raise, you raise some excellent points, Mr. Hudson. The devil's in the details, in terms of, in terms of filling that vacant space. Now, I do know in the short term, they're, for the most part, leased out, so he could, Mr. Jonah could probably sit there and rhyme off exactly what is permitted today, but you're right, when those leases expire, and they're looking, trying to beat the bushes, finding someone else, you know, what's, what's appropriate to go in there?
I suppose if you define the PUD, kind of specifically the uses allowed in the Beaver Corridor, that kind of answers my question. And it's not a free-for-all at that point, because there are limitations on what can be done. And we haven't hamstrung the applicant in, let's say, McDonald's Restaurant, if that's what it is, and Burger King wants to come in. Okay.
Yeah, and, and you're, you're exactly right, Mr. Hudson. The balance is, is you want to provide enough flexibility so that the applicant doesn't have to come back for, for revisions of the PUD all the time, but you don't want to provide so much flexibility that it's an open book. I mean, you want, you want appropriateness, and, and what we've talked about is, is the uses that are already kind of delineated in the Big Beaver Corridor District.
And that will be in the agreement.
Correct.
You, thank you, that answered my question.
You hang on just a second. Are there any other questions of staff?
I have one.
Mr. Krent?
Regarding, this would be regarding Mr. Deering's report. I've, I've got a lot of issues with what he said, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I just want to review, give, read a quick quote out of his summary on the situation. He says, "There are currently four drives to Alpine Road, one for the office retail portion of the site, and three from former residential houses. The plan would retain four accesses. One new street intersection for the residential portion of the site, and two full access, and one single, one single, and a single one-way drive for the retail portion." What he's saying is, the plan would retain, and again, I think the key word he uses is retain, for, for, basically for curb cuts. And yeah, there are, but we're not retaining the four curb cuts, we're, we're changing those four curb cuts dramatically. Three of those curb cuts were for single-family residential driveways. The fourth one was for a little print shop that ran out of a residential house. There's very little traffic there. What we're replacing it with are four new, not retaining the old ones, four new curb cuts. And that curb, the first one is the bank, exits from the, the drive-through, you've got three lanes coming out of that bank drive-through. And then you've got two accesses from a retail parking lot that serves as, again, there's no number written now for how many stores there'll be, but there's at least five, if not six, stores plus that bank parking in that spot, which is substantially more than a one driveway to a residential home. And then you've got a new street which has sixteen homes on it coming out to Alpine. So that's, that's not, we're not retaining those curb cuts, those four. What we're doing is getting rid of those four low-impact curb cuts and putting in very high, high volume of, of traffic for those curb cuts. It's entirely different. And what I, what I, what I, the point I want to make is, I don't think we should inflict that many high-volume traffic curb cuts onto a residential street, and to, especially for the residents to the north of this development. And not only impacting those residents to the north, but we've got a traffic situation. We've got people, and I, I know that road real well, as you probably understand why. People are going forty-five miles an hour on Big Beaver, and they turn out to Alpine. Certainly, they slow down, but when they round that corner, they're going around twenty-five miles an hour. Now, the person coming out, now you said they increased that distance twenty-four feet from Big Beaver, that, where the bank exit comes onto Alpine. If you're going twenty-five miles an hour, I can't imagine it'll be more than a half a second that you'll travel twenty-four feet. At that kind of speed, and that kind of, and, and the person coming out of the bank has virtually no visibility to Big Beaver. Even if they may look over their shoulder, they'll still see only maybe twenty, thirty feet of Big Beaver. And that twenty, thirty feet, car will be there, it'll be there within a second and hit them. That is much too close of a, of a major traffic access to Alpine, right at that intersection of Big Beaver, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. Second, the next one up from the north of that one is the access to Alpine from the retail parking. That is a, another one that's very close to Big Beaver, and coming out, as they come out onto that, into the, out of that retail parking, onto Alpine, to turn left onto Alpine to get to Big Beaver, they'll probably find, because of the other two access points, a traffic backup. And what I'm suggesting is that there is a big difference between locating the bank on the west side as it is proposed, and on the east side. I disagree with Mr. Deering's analysis on that. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for staff? Now, Mr. Jonah, it's your turn, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the, the underlying zoning, that's a, that's a great item that is probably of most concern to us to have, to be able to have the flexibility to re-lease the properties. We've looked at the underlying zoning district that we're going to live with, and basically, it's a PUD, but the underlying zoning district controls what uses and, that we can put into the, into the property. So, and we're comfortable with that. And there, these are very strict guidelines that I think we have to live with, within that zoning district. As far as the hardscape and the landscaping requirements, we feel that the hardscaping in the, the area on the southern end or along Big Beaver, the, the hardscape that we've created, if we didn't do hardscape there, we'd do landscape. We, we counted that as part of the landscaping, if you may, as part of the landscaping of the overall project, instead of landscaping, it's just hardscape. Since the last time we were here, we've created more landscaping within the, the sidewalks at the northern end or facing the parking lot to create more landscaping that's more effective, because, you know, people are walking towards the building from the parking lot, and we're, we're looking to do the landscape islands within the sidewalks. Traffic. You know, I hate to think what the traffic was going to be like if you had the old Monarch Plan coming and, and developing that. We feel that we're restricting traffic from turning north out of this property. We feel that placing the bank on the western end of the building gives us that landscape feature to connect the, the northern end of the property with the southern end hardscaping You know, I don't know what else we could do with this. We've looked at it seventy-five different ways, and we feel that we've done as much as we could with this. Restricting traffic flow onto Alpine, you know, if people are driving fifty miles an hour, I don't think that's an item for us to control, I think that's a policing item. And if there are people driving fifty miles an hour, I would think that the police department has to control that, within our property as well. If there are people that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, it has to be policed, and I can't take responsibility for that. If there are any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address.
Would you like to give us a little bit of a presentation on your materials, sir?
Right. Basically, we're doing a registry, the metal colors for the architectural design that's going in between the buildings.
Excuse me, Mr. Tagle, I can't see the-
I'm sorry.
Maybe if you, maybe if you put it on the, on the easel, that might help. There we go.
I don't know which view is better.
The registry would put a red color for the column so that they could stand out, limestone, so. This board was actually pretty good, but the last painting was really hot outside, the left end of the car had kind of melted and gone off. This is basically the stack stone, this is the metal and the color that's going to go on above, and, um, more of the same brick and the shingles that, that they would be using.
Is it the same brick that's going to be on the commercial?
The same, the same.
Okay.
On all, on all, the same brick, and the same limestone.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jonah? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
It's not necessarily for Mr. Jonah, but I, I guess if we were to include the hardscape along the front part of the, the retail there, would that then meet the 20 percent requirement?
In, in our calculation to get to the 14 percent, we did include the hardscape as well as a landscaped area, and in totality, it was 14 percent.
Well, I, I noticed that one of the alternatives was to provide a green roof, is that totally out of question?
I'm sorry?
A green roof, did you consider a green roof?
No, we did not, yeah.
Because?
I know economics, they're not supposed to play a factor here, but mainly cost. We looked at, you know, we were over on our parking, and we looked at the idea of eliminating more parking spaces to create more landscaping, and we also looked at other uses that are within that Big Beaver Corridor. Restaurants do very well. The landscaping, I mean, the parking requirements were used, not using any restaurant users within the building. So, we have flexibility to, we're leaving ourselves some flexibility for restaurants, for the future. Right now, we, we've yet to, to talk to restaurant people, we could fill this property up with restaurants in a heartbeat. We're, we're reserving leasing till, I believe, we get construction started. We know that this is going to lease the upper, higher-end tenants that we may not have to put food users, I mean, we may want to put one or two smaller food users so that we could use the hardscape and people sitting outside, and, but it's something that we're reserving till the very end to put food users in. We have the extra parking space, we want to reserve that extra parking spaces, like you say, for the future. We don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, and we want to have, we want to have the capacity to be able to use those parking spaces if we need them.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Just a follow-up. Have we, I don't recall ever having allowed a six percent deficiency recently. Is that true or not?
I would have, I would have to look back in, at other PUDs, I don't know what the percentage was for the Monarch. I'd have to look at that. That was another kind of urban, urban type of design, I don't have the calculation on my fingertips.
How about Granite City? Do they meet?
Granite City, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlisle?
One, one potential option to deal, if there is some heartburn about granting the six percent relief, would be to landbank some of the parking in the short term while the applicant figures out what the final uses of this site is, and then, at which point, the applicant can come back and fill in that parking if need be, and we can look at other options for, like, for greening up the site, too.
I like that.
Yes, Mr. Hudson?
Brent and I, and Mark Miller, and Tom Stratt, a couple years ago, spent about three full days up in Lansing discussing form-based zoning. And one of the things I was impressed with is we've kind of come about 180 degrees in a circle from the old-time- eighty degrees in a circle from the old-time cement, brick, wood, facing all along Thoroughfare, with very little landscaping in front, but it was people-friendly. And this may be one of those exceptions where the form-based coating, in my opinion, might have to take a little precedence over that, I don't know if it's arbitrary or not, the twenty percent landscaping requirement. If there's ever a project, I think, that maybe needed a little help in the landscaping requirement, this may be it, and I'd be sympathetic to waiving that real deficiency.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. I guess, Mr. Karla, I have a question for you. In your report, you'd indicated that with an urban-style development like this, that it is, that that percentage may not be a good percentage to be targeting. Any idea?
Well, I wouldn't say it's not a good target, it's just, it might be difficult to obtain in certain circumstances in more urban-style developments. That twenty percent is, irregardless, if you're on Big Beaver, you're in a residential neighborhood, you're on Maple Road, it's, it's a number that's uniform throughout the city. And in some of these urban-style developments, such as Big Beaver, Maple Corridor, that twenty percent is, it would be, is more difficult to obtain than other style developments.
In your experience, what, what is a, a number that a lot of the urban developments in our hitting? I mean, is it, is it the fourteen, fifteen percent? Is it more or less? Can you, can you speak to that, or no?
I, I don't have an example of a best practice, but I've seen most places are around ten percent for urban-style developments such as this.
Okay.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I don't know if you can peg a number to the percentages. I think it's every property and every development on its own. I believe that the, the, we've met that twenty percent in good faith because you have the landscaping in the, in the hardscape that's very close to the building itself. I believe that the intent has been met. I don't know if you can put a ten, fourteen, or twenty percent number when you're doing an urban-style building. I think that the intent is met by doing the landscaping and being a lot more creative with the hardscape and the landscape that you do that surround the building.
I'm trying to help support you, Mr. Jonah.
I know. I mean, I'm telling you what I think. It's, I believe it's the right thing.
Yeah, and, and again, I agree with Mr. Hudson's comments that, you know, this has to be somewhat of a give-and-take, but again, what I was trying to do is really, maybe for us as a commission or as a, as a city, we need to revisit that when we're talking about form-based codes along Big Beaver and it's an urban-style development. Maybe the twenty percent is a little bit aggressive and that we need to revisit that. So, I was seeing if, in your practices, that you might, and you shared some thoughts.
Yeah, and, and the other thing that, that Mr. Sautner and I struggled with when we were reviewing this in terms of landscaping was the, the connectivity between the residential portion and the commercial portion. You take the, the site in its entirety, including the residential portion, it well exceeds the twenty percent in terms of site landscaping. However, just taking the commercial portion alone in isolation and separating it from the residential portion, that's where you get to the fourteen percent. But in totality, if you consider the residential portion, especially with the increased setback along the northern property line, it, it well exceeds that twenty percent requirement as of a PUD in total, but we didn't, we didn't count that towards that twenty percent along the commercial portion. Just.
Let me ask the obvious question. If this is a single project and a single PUD, why wouldn't we be using that entire number? Is there, I mean, is there a reason why the ordinance precludes that, or?
The ordinance doesn't preclude that, just the, the nature of the project, we really felt it was, it was, we needed to measure it from just the commercial portion itself.
All right, thanks. Yes, Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, I do have a question. Maybe I should have brought it up at the last review meeting, but has there been any discussion relating to integration of the parking lot adjacent with the parking lot in this development?
Yes, there has been. We've met with the neighbors to the east and offered to redo the whole parking lot and create it as one, and they've decided to stay separate. We, we offered to redo the whole thing and make it all one, and they, they don't want to have anything to do with it.
Okay. Just wanted to ask that question, because it seems like there may be some opportunity to do just that sort of cooperation, and that would help blend the area into one continuous development.
We spend good, I mean, we, we did plans on it, we engineered it, and they decided, they opted to, to keep their own.
Mr. Krent?
Yeah. Hi. First off, I really want this development. I think it's fabulous. And as far as the landscaping, and you compare major urban areas, Paris, New York, Chicago, and you'll probably find they don't meet even ten percent as far as, in their, you know, urban Main Street developments for landscaping. So, as long as you create that ambiance of elegance, and I want to be there, if it's green, or if it's brass, or marble, granite, those great materials, natural materials, would, to me, meet the requirements, because you're looking at it, we're trying to develop as an urban setting. So, I totally agree with that. I mean, I, I can easily see fourteen percent, it doesn't bother me at all. My question is, on the streets going on either side, Alpine and McClure, mainly on Alpine because your property's right on that edge, what will you be doing for landscaping that side, the western end of your property? And will you, the street starts off paved and off of Big Beaver, and then it narrows to asphalt with no curbs. What is that going to look like? Is that street going to be concrete, or is it going to have curves?
No, no, we're, we're curbing and landscaping. There's all plan that we're going all the way up to the, to the northern edge of the property, the residential property. We're re-curbing it and redesigning the whole thing. The plan is to go all the way north to the northern end of the residential. Curbing, we're putting in sidewalks and landscape, re-landscaping the whole.
Well, that, that existing asphalt there is pretty rough. I mean, it's, it's smooth, but it's lumpy. Are you going to repave that? What's going to happen with that part of the street?
It's, the street is the street. We're not, we're touching with our property line and doing our curb lines.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion?
I've got some discussion points.
Mr. Krent?
I made some comments earlier about the traffic on the west side with the bank, and I just wanted to provide a verbal example of what can be done on the east side and the consequences of having it there compared to be on the west side. The, if you put on the east side, the, the people driving forty-five miles on, forty-five miles an hour on Big Beaver pull into the east side entrance, and easily, it would be fifty to seventy feet of straight run to slow down before they'd have to turn into the bank compared to twenty, compared to the twenty-four-foot people exiting on the west side. This creates a much calmer traffic situation if it was developed, if the bank was on the east side. And there's certainly ways to make it so that there can be an ATM accessible to the driver's side, and I've come up with some ideas for that. I've related it to our planning director, and he may suggest that to the developer, I don't know. But I think it would be a much safer situation to have a slower speed around all those cars at the drive-thru. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Want to make a resolution?
I'd like to. I'd like to make, actually, a substitute resolution. If I may.
I don't know. Is that protocol, Ms. Lancaster?
Not until there's a first resolution on the floor.
I think what, I think what you're saying is that he could make the first resolution.
Yes, he can make the first resolution, yes.
Okay.
It wouldn't be called a substitute until you had one on the floor. I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
That's fine. I didn't understand it either. Okay, so I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay. What, I mean?
Do you want me to read it?
Of course.
Oh, my. Okay. It's a long one. Okay, I'll start off. Whereas AF Jonah Development submitted an application for the planned unit development, including a twenty-four thousand square-foot retail building and a three thousand five hundred square-foot branch, bank branch, along Big Beaver Road with sixteen single-family residential units to the north, and whereas the application is consistent with the City of Troy master plan, and whereas the commercial component along Big Beaver achieves many of the goals of the Big Beaver Corridor study, and whereas the pedestrian amenities proposed by the applicant along Big Beaver provide a significant public benefit by offering a pedestrian-style and scale building that can be an example to be emulated along the Big Beaver Corridor, and whereas the residential component serves as a subtle transition between, oh, suitable, I'm sorry, not subtle, suitable transition between the commercial component and the existing residential neighborhood to the north, and, and I'm going to pause for a second because I don't have the total resolution in front of me at this time. If I may?
It's on page forty-eight.
Oh, okay. My screen went blank. Does someone else have it up there? Okay, whereas the application is complete with the adjacent, oh, is compatible with the adjacent properties and uses, therefore be it resolved, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the city council approve of the zoning and the northern two parcels, three-one-two-eight Alpine and three-one-four-one McClure, from R1B family, one-family residential district, the PUD planned unit development, and that these two parcels be included in the proposed PUD, and be it finally resolved, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the city council concurrently approve the concept development plan and preliminary development plan approval for the Big Beaver Center HUD PUD.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Mr. Sanzico. Mr. Savin and on the roll call.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Is this the point where I can introduce my?
No. No. Yeah, there's some confusion. Well, this has never happened before. Usually, you have to have a second, and then you introduce your substitute motion.
I was going to, but it was already called for, hope before I could do that.
Okay. What you can do is finish this vote, then, but then you can ask that the motion be reconsidered. And if enough people that voted with the majority, if you can get a majority of those to ask to reconsider, then you can make a substitute motion. Sorry, I, I must have misunderstood what you were saying.
It's okay.
So, you would finish the vote, and then you would make, somebody that voted with the majority has to make a motion to reconsider the vote tonight.
So, I have to vote with the majority?
Yep.
Yes.
Somebody in the majority has to vote for that.
It's a yes vote?
I think I have to. If I want to make a substitution, I have to vote yes.
Well, that's not going to work. I guess what we, we'd have to ask, if there's anybody willing to entertain a new motion after we get, I mean, I don't want you to change your vote just to be able to have a substitute motion, but we do have a motion on the floor we have to complete. So, somebody that voted with, the winning side has to ask that the motion be reconsidered. And I guess what you're going to have to do is rely on your fellow planning commissioners to see if somebody that voted in the majority is willing to do that.
Then I'll vote no.
And Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Can I ask, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, the, the first motion has passed.
The first motion has passed, but at the same meeting at which you've just voted, not, you can't wait till next month, at, Robert's rules allow you at the same meeting to reconsider your motion if somebody that voted in the majority votes to reconsider a motion based upon what Mr. Krent is asking you to do. So, he can ask you to do this, but it takes somebody from the majority to make the motion to, to reconsider your motion.
Am I part of the majority?
No, you're, you were, majority is anybody that voted yes tonight. So, I know it sounds convoluted.
I see, I voted no, okay.
But, and you can only do it at the meeting at which the motion was carried, so I guess you have to rely on your fellow councilor.
Would anybody of our commission vote to reconsider?
Why don't you tell us a little bit more about what your thoughts are, Tom?
All right. Can I read my?
Absolutely, you can.
Okay, the only two, the only two sections I've interjected are these. One, therefore be resolved, the bank branch is to be located on the east end of the Big Beaver Road property frontage for the following reasons. Its proposed location at the west end of the Big Beaver Road frontage imposes a detrimental traffic impact to the residents north of the project. Additionally, the proposed west location creates a potential traffic hazard between vehicles entering Alpine Road from Big Beaver Road and vehicles exiting the bank drive-thru lanes because the bank's exit lanes, because of the bank's exit lanes, close proximity to Big Beaver Road. Furthermore, be it furthermore resolved, the access to the retail parking lot from Alpine Road and the access to Alpine Road from the retail parking lot shall be limited to one curb cut, which shall be located at the northernmost end of the retail parking lot to reduce traffic congestion, congestion on Alpine Road at the Big Beaver Road intersection. This one curb cut will be a directional driveway that is curved toward Big Beaver Road, making it difficult to turn north onto Alpine.
I have a question for Ms. Lancaster. Does the Planning Commission have the ability to put those kind of conditions on this project?
It's a planned unit development, so you can make specific conditions. If you're redesigning the site plan, you, you're not supposed to redesign what's been presented to you by the petitioner. So, it depends on whether you consider this redesigning or just putting a condition on the actual planned unit development.
Can I add to that?
Yes, you can, Mr. Savin.
I agree with everything Ms. Lancaster said, keeping in mind that the Planning Commission is a recommending body for this item.
Right, right.
So, you can, it's, you're essentially, you're making a recommendation, so you're not placing conditions per se because you're not approving it, but, so, for what it's worth.
So, who defines or decides if the extent of the proposed changed resolution is a redesign of the site?
Well, that's within your bailiwick. I mean, if he, if it's, the conditions are usually a site plan, it's something similar to the last petitioner that was up here about adding bike racks or make sure, doing something that's an actual part of the code that is not going to completely change the site plan. If this suggestion is going to completely change what was presented tonight, the site plan, I would say that's redesigning. So, if it's, if it's flipping the development, if it's moving buildings, if it's moving the architectural design, you're changing what's, what the petitioner is requesting. So, based upon what was said, it, I, I will defer to your discretion, and it rather sounds like a changing of a design.
Is this the discretion of the commission or of the chair?
At this point, it would be the discretion of the board to decide if they want to entertain Mr. Krent's request to redo the motion based upon what he wants to change that motion to be. So, I would think that at this point, the board has to decide together collectively if it's a redesign and you don't want to entertain the motion, or if you feel it's conditions and you will entertain the motion, it's open to discussion from the board.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Sanzico.
I, I like to go on record, I, I really recognize Mr. Krent's concerns, and I, obviously, you live there and you're aware of, of all the issues with the traffic, but we have an opinion from a traffic engineer that, that, that supports what they're proposing in the design. And, and I'd have a hard time, you know, redesigning the site after, after we've got an opinion from a professional that has supports what, what is being proposed by the petitioner. So, I, so at this point, I, I really couldn't support what you're, you're suggesting, although I do respect what your concerns are, and I understand you live there and you have a great interest in the property, but at this point, I'd, I'd hate to ask the petitioner to change the design based upon, once we have an opinion from a professional traffic engineer.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let me ask the question, is there anyone that would support what Mr. Krent is? Is there anyone that would support what Mr. Krent is asking the revise, revisions to the resolution?
So if no one from the majority chooses to put a reconsidered motion on the table, then the first motion stands.
Okay. All right. Mr. Savinon?
The minutes will reflect what Mr. Krent's concerns were. It's kind of the equivalent of asking Mr. Krent for his no vote, I would think, but certainly Mr. Krent can, can, can speak for himself on this matter.
All right, thank you. All set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, good. Congratulations. Now, next item, are there any public comments for items on the agenda? As the masses leave, I see none. All right, who, do planning commission comments? Well, I'll start at this census. Mr. Carlisle's busy. Ms. Lancaster?
Well, that was an interesting last motion, but it, that doesn't happen very often. But at least we are, feel that all the board members got their say-so in and that's important for the record for, because it's going to be. Other than that, good to see you all.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, did I talk about the Sustainable Development Committee meeting and the Sustainable Development Committee project on the corner of Stevenson and Piedmont? Okay. I've talked about it a lot, I just couldn't remember. Mr. Hudson reminded me. Mr. Hudson serves on the Sustainable Development Committee, which is comprised of the zoning administrator, the, the, the.
Building official.
Building official, thank you, Mr. Hudson, I drew a blank. The city, the city engineer and two planning commission members appointed by city manager, one is Mr. Hudson, one is Mr. Stratt. We met a couple of weeks ago for a project that was at, it's at 1100 Piedmont, but forget about that address because they're going to re-address it on Stevenson Highway soon. Essentially, it was a vacant light industrial building taken over by a firm called MBA Engineering. What they do is they design and manufacture robotics, assembly line robotics. And they're bringing over 100 jobs to the city. What they wanted to do is, obviously they're going to repurpose the, the light industrial building, but what they also wanted to do was dramatically heighten the presence of the building on Stevenson Highway. So they, they wanted to do was add a dramatic entry feature and also 14 parking spaces in front of the building. Because it was zoned IB, surrounded by IB, it's, it's, it's administrative site plan approval, but they, what they essentially needed was a variance for the 14 parking spaces in front of the building. Our zoning ordinance, however, doesn't, grants the, the option for, for petitioners to do the sustainable development project option. So what they did is they gave us a, a design for the front of the building, the parking spaces, and they, they also provided a number, just a really impressive number, Mr. Hudson, would you agree, of sustainable design features, including a stormwater detention basin, that's a site amenity with native plants, drug-tolerant plant species, some pervious sidewalk in front of the building, low, low LED, low-impact LED lighting, natural lighting. The, the entry feature also had a lot of glass that, that, that put some natural lighting into the building, some hybrid parking spaces. Mr. Hudson, am I forgetting, I'm probably forgetting a number of sustainable features.
This really illustrated the beauty of that Sustainable Development Committee's ordinance. I mean, they really came forward and did a magnificent job.
We, and we've got some before pictures. And what I, what I, I will do is, this is our third project that's got this approval. When we get a couple of projects that are constructed, I'll, I'll, we'll do a presentation, myself, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Stratt, and we'll show some before and after pictures. Once, once the, the plans get established and the construction is done, I think that would be a great study session item.
Thank you. Very, very well said.
Nothing to say.
Mr. Krent? No? Mr. Kempin? Any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Edmonds?
I was just curious that, did anyone notify the other of the three absent members that they were not eager to see me?
I was notified by Mr. Stratt and I believe you were notified by, well, and Mr. Palm Springs, yes.
Schultz.
Schultz.
My only concern is, you know, if somebody should ever have to recuse themselves, we're really pushing ourselves on the edge of a quorum. Thank you.
I don't have any comments. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carlisle?
No comments.
Kathy? No? Will?
Gordon Shepke did let me know that he wasn't going to be here, so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, probably either contacting Brent or myself would be helpful in the future.
That's a good point. We, three people missing is a large number.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I have no further comments. Thank you all for your time tonight and have a good evening.